I'll ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin our meeting, as we always do, with public audience. Per the rules adopted by the Board of Selectmen, we offer folks up to five minutes to speak before the Board. If anyone feels they need more time and would like to speak with me or any other member of the Board of Selectmen, we would be happy to make arrangements to meet with anyone at a later time. So with that, is there anyone who would like to speak at public audience? We'll go from left to right. April, if you could please come up to the podium. Yeah, you can do it. You can do it. April, can you just state your full name and your address for the clerk? Thank you.
Hello. Hi. Okay. My name's April Pazado. I live at 16 County Road, and I have sons that live on 14 County Road and 20 County Road. First of all, I just want to say that I'm 100% opposed to a solar farm in Simsbury. First of all, at that address, the proposed farm will be going right along our property line on one side and across the back. And Lisa, I know you were -- walked the property line. You saw how close it is. There is absolutely no buffer between our property and the proposed fields. The only buffer are the trees on our property. There's nothing in between. So that said, I've made a couple notes. So again, I'm 100% opposed to an industrial-sized solar plant invading our town and residential neighborhoods. I think it is wrong for our community, which is based on a historic past, where farming and open space is what drew many of us residents to this town in the first place. We have a beautiful town with a rich past. This proposal of an enormous solar field is crazy. First of all, I think we should stand together, the residents and the town board, and let the siting council know that this is wrong for our residential neighborhoods and our community. We have to look at the big picture. The tax revenue that this plant -- the tax revenue that this plant could possibly bring should not be a deciding factor. It will decrease with time, and I guess isn't that much to start with. As a town, we should decide what is built on our land, not Massachusetts and Rhode Island. Would more homes be so bad? I'm not sure. Schools are emptying out. There's room. Homes would bring more tax revenue than solar fields. The solar fields are an eyesore. They will bring our home values, our home and property values, down. New people won't want to come to Simsbury. It's bad for our wildlife. A couple hundred acres of land will be fenced off, and at least 35 acres deforested. That'll be pushing the bear, deer, coyotes, and other wildlife into our neighborhoods. They're not going to be able to go back in. It's all going to be fenced off. I think Simsbury can do better, and should do better, with its natural resources. I would like to see the town of Simsbury represent us with the siting council and say, "No, and let's make our own choices for our town and our land." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? We'll go from left to right. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, I'm Christina Kilborn-Jones, 85 Hoskins Road. Unaccustomed, as I am, to public speaking and not particularly prepared, I am totally against this industrial solar system. My home is directly, directly affected on three sides. It is a historical home. It is the original home of the Hoskins family. The Kilborn family's the only ones that have lived in it. I was born in it. So, however, I'm not famous, so it doesn't matter. But the thing of it is, and then the sister home is up the street at 100 Hoskins, which is Mrs. Loomis Farm, which is owned by the Robles right now. And those are the two historical homes in the area. Nobody's considered any of this. I've got the school right near me. You know, solar panels give off, I don't know at what stage, I've read and read and read about this stuff, but I don't know what stage they give off the poisonous, which causes actually, it's a lung disease, silicosis. Of course, I don't know how long these panels are supposed to last. We don't even know how they're going to get rid of them, or who they're going to get rid of them to. We don't even know who is building what. I've read enough on these that the solar panels probably aren't built in the United Electrical wiring, I don't know, GE was part of this at one time, but they're not part of it now, that I know of. So in essence, there's an awful lot that needs to be done on this. This has been rushed through to us. Not only that, I feel, and I'm not trying to insult any of you, but I think you've thrown us under the bus. I think that you have known about this a lot sooner than we did, and it should have been brought up to us, because we are the homeowners. We have children here, well, some of us do, and some of us don't anymore. And Simsbury was actually a great bedroom town for Hartford. My dad's office, my dad was a doctor. We had a working farm, yes, but his office was in Hartford. And it had such a draw for people here, from the travelers, the etna, whatever. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Going from left to right, back to front. Yes.
Mike Flamini, 3 Kilborn Farms. I had the opportunity to attend the meeting that the company held at the high school. I believe some of you were there. I'm not sure if all of you were there. What struck me the most was their unwillingness to answer certain fundamental, basic questions about the project, and I'm sure it will be revealed whenever their submissions come due. There are two questions that I actually think are interrelated, and they refuse to answer them, because I know they realize how bad this looks. And it comes back to the size and the scale of this project. The first question had to do with, so 25 years out from now, what do you do with these things? And he gave a technical answer. No one understood what that meant, which led me to believe that they don't have the foggiest idea about what they're going to do with these things. Bonded or not, whoever's responsible financially or not, I think there's an open question about what do you actually do with these panels. The related question was one that I asked him, is how many panels will there be? And again, they gave us a non-answer. Purely by chance, there was a gentleman on the other side of the room that happened to know his stuff, and he answered the question. Well, we had all come to that same conclusion a month before, because it's just simple math on how you get there. So the answer is 100,000 panels. Not thinking enough on my feet, but after the fact, over the weekend, I sat down and did a mental exercise. So what does 100,000 panels even look like? Now, it turns out it's 250 miles if you laid these things end to end. So that gets us from Hartford to Baltimore if you took it literally, if you went horizontally and laid them end to end. Just think about how much that is, how much material that is. Now, I did a different exercise, and if we did it horizontally going up, and if you stacked these things on top of each other, it actually is going to bump into the International Space Station, whose altitude, on average, is 250 miles above the earth. So I just want to create images for people so that they can appreciate the sheer magnitude of what they're talking about bringing into our quaint little town. And it's just simply, as we've said before, it's too much, it's too big, and it's too soon. So again, appreciate the town taking an official stance with us, with the siting council, to reflect that this project has to be put on hold and rethought, and whether or not we end up with solar, I don't know, but at least rethink it towards what the town really needs. Thank you.
Thank you. From left to right, back to front. Joan. Oh, I didn't see you raise your hand. If you could just raise your hand so I can recognize you, that would be helpful.
I'm Zheng Kui Zhang. I'm living at 1 Kilborn Farms. This is my second time here. So this morning around 9:00 AM, I heard NPR news, introduced the news about Deepwater Wind, the solar project. And I heard that, you know, first of all, you voiced your concern about our residents' concerns. One of the concerns is about the property value. So, I mean, I went to the Deepwater and the public hearing in the high school. So I appreciated their time, because they really not required to do, but I think all the answers they gave us should be accurate and not misleading. One of those questions that the lady asked was the impact about property value. And the CEO said there's no impact on the property value based on the research. I left after that question was answered, because what I heard was, from some experienced editors, that there would be 10% to 20% of the impact on the property value. So, and the CEO mentioned that he will forward the research or the paper to the lady who asked, requests that. I don't know whether the CEO shared that information with you guys. If not, can we request that? Because, okay, so the reason for this is, if the CEO really wants to mislead us, we really want to, I guess, you know, where's the credit from, right? So I want to say, so for one thing, whether the research, if he can refer us to some research done, we want to see whether the research is done in the right way. For example, we know, we all know that the property in Massachusetts, you know, around in Cambridge, increased a lot, right? If you think, you know, say, a property close to a solar farm or, you know, solar panel, say, increased by 5%, but OS being equal, the property far from the solar panel gets a 50% increase, do you think, you know, whether that impacted the property value? I would say yes, right? Just increase by 5% doesn't mean it's, you know, it's not impacted. Or if you can think about the other way, if, you know, the no property gain of values, but then the property, which is close to the solar panel, decreased by 10%, 20%, then there, that's the impact. So the research, I just doubt about the research, if the CEO can refer us to that study, and also see what data was done, what they are using, and based on what year data. So, thank you.
You're welcome. We will have Mr. Cook email Eileen tomorrow to request that information. Okay. Is there anyone else going from? Hi, you're coming in late for it, but we'll let you come on in.
Name is Bill Traynor, 43 Berkshire Way. And basically, I just want to support everybody who said something so far tonight. Everything that they've said, I agree with. And I think it was Mike said something about the depth of this project. Today, just so locally, you can get a vision of this. The farms, which is absolutely beautiful, the rec center, right? The hockey, the skating, the golf, everything, all totaled, that's only 256 acres. This project is going to be massive. It's going to be like almost 300 acres. So it's going to be bigger than that even. And it's just going to be an ugly sight for the town. That's my feeling. And it's going to take away from people coming into the town.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Go on from left to right. All right, Joan.
Joan Cole, 26 Whitcombe Drive. I would like to inform you that I have filed a complaint with the Freedom of Information Act against Dave Ryan, President of Simsbury Performing Arts, S-PAC, due to the rejection of my request to see the invoice for the purchase of the Cusman utility vehicle he purchased with town money for $15,000. Pursuant to Freedom of Information Act, I have to prove that the Simsbury Performing Arts is a public hybrid entity. Dave Ryan told me that the Simsbury Performing Arts Center is a private agency, and he does not have to produce any information to the public. I also ask the Freedom of Information Commission to oppose a fine on Dave Ryan, the person with the files, for $1,000. Dave Ryan has been wearing two hats. He is the Chairman of the Zoning Commission and President of Simsbury Performing Arts Center, where the zoning commission has to impose violations on the S-PAC. It appears that this is a flagrant conflict of interest. It also places the planning staff in a precarious situation on imposing a violation on the S-PAC. Is the town attorney and the planning staff working for Dave Ryan and the S-PAC, or the residents of Simsbury? The Simsbury S-PAC has a website with a calendar of events. The website advertising the blues concert has a provision for purchasing onsite camping at the Two Left Feet Blues Festival. It appears that Dave Ryan did not consult with the Board or the town on camping on town property. Tent field camping has 75 spaces at $75 per space, two tents per site. RV vehicles with 100 available spaces or 100 per vehicle with a maximum of six people per site. $15 per additional person. This requires a weekend camping pass. There are no electric hookups or sewers. Portlets are provided and limited water. Showers are available off-site. There are rules of conduct stipulated. There's a quiet time from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Food must be in container. No firearms, no public intoxication or drug use. Above-ground fire pits are available. Who will be enforcing any violations? Has the Simsbury Police Department approved this event? Will the S-PAC be responsible if a person is mauled by a bear? Has Simsbury been a, Simsbury, has Simsbury become a honky-tonk town with a trailer park on town-owned property in the center of town? Dave Ryan has already collected money for camping, although it is in violation of the zoning regulations. It appears that this is in violation of the zoning regulations that Chairman Dave Ryan of the zoning commission should be enforcing instead of violating. According to a wedding website, there will be a reception for a wedding at the Performing Arts on Saturday, September 30, 2017. According to the website, Brett Hollander of Hartford Distributors is getting married. Why has this event not been vetted by the town and his Board for compliance with the S-PAC contract? Dave Ryan should resign from the zoning commission, and he should be removed as President of the S-PAC for his apparent violation of the contract with the town. And I have the links to these articles. According to the town contract with the S-PAC, the town receives $2,500 for the season. I am concerned about having a solar farm on farmland. Recently, the town sold Ferrer's Farm to the Land Trust so that farmland could be preserved. The town was in favor of giving the farmers money for not developing their land and having them preserve farmland. However, now the town has sold out on their concerns about preservation of farmland by allowing Deepwater Wind, the Rhode Island developer, to initiate a solar farm on prime agricultural land. The agent for this project is Pullman Connolly, the law firm that past First Selectman Mary Glassman's husband is a member. It should also be noted that Pullman and Connolly is the law firm for Governor Malloy. Is this coincidental that Simsbury was chosen for this project? Has past First Selectman Glassman been the rainmaker for Andrew Glassman's law firm, Pullman and Connolly? Is past First Selectman Mary Glassman selling out the town for political gain? It is shameful that out of 17,000 voters in Simsbury, only 1,039 took the initiative to vote for a $102.2 million budget. This raises the mill rate to 39.99, the highest mill rate in the valley, with the possibility of a supplemental bill when the state approves their budget and revenues are reduced to the town. Simsbury will become unaffordable for most people. Property values will be reduced, and Simsbury will be economically undesirable for economic development. The taxpayers can no longer subsidize the Simsbury Golf Course or the restaurant. The town should lease the golf course to a professional management company. And all my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Cole, news feed on Facebook, and simsbury.com forum topics. Thank you for listening. And all the links to these papers will be on the website.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
So you can look at it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
What's going on in Simsbury.
Thank you, Joan.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Josh Livingston. I live at 4 McLean Street, right by the town offices here. I'm not a lifelong Simsbury resident, but I've lived here for 10 years, moved away for two, and chose to move back to Simsbury just because of the town that it is. In addition to be a resident, my wife and I have invested in Simsbury. We own five homes in town. None of them are close to the project, so we're not directly affected by the panels, but as residents of the town, we are affected. I'm concerned about the company and the fact that they call it a farm to make it sound great. It's not a farm. It's a huge project that's not going to look anything like a farm. At the meeting that I was at at the high school, Deepwater made it sound like that they care about Simsbury, saying that their solar farm is the best use of the land. It won't tax the schools with more students. It won't be a huge commercial project like office buildings, but they don't care about Simsbury. It's all about money, in my opinion. If they could find land in Avon or Canton for less money to lease, they would go there. So they don't care about Simsbury. Putting a project like that into a town like ours will definitely make other, will make other people think about going somewhere else to live. It may change my opinion about where I want to live. I want townspeople that are going to protect our town for the right reasons. I've tried to make improvements to my own properties, just residences, putting a front porch on a property to make it look better. The resistance that I've got, just to put a front porch on, made me not want to do it. So I'm asking you guys to be a voice for us, since we don't have a voice, and to protect this town and not just sell it out for money. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going from, we'll go to Mark.
Hi, Mark Scully, Nuts Road. I'd like to, first of all, thank you for this opportunity, and I'd like to praise the really civil discussion that we've been having in town. This is obviously a topic that stirs up a lot of emotions, but I think all the discussion, including on Facebook, has been really civil, and I hope it continues that way. I think we're going to be doing this for a few months still, so I really welcome the chance to share a few comments. And I really support the several forums that you've had, and as a member of the Clean Energy Task Force, we'd be pleased to continue to offer events to make sure that people can make informed decisions, because I think there is a lot of information. There's also a lot of misinformation out there. I think it's good to go back to why this whole thing came up. This is the tri-state RFP, and the purpose of that, this procurement, is to develop clean renewable energy facilities close to where we use the energy, so that we don't have to transmit the energy over long distances. So there are nine projects that have been selected. One is in Simsbury. This will be very good for Simsbury in many respects. It's going to produce some tax revenue. It's going to produce some economic development, some jobs during the construction and during the maintenance, very few additional services. The benefit to us and to the region is that our energy transmission costs will go down. We don't need to transmit energy from Quebec and other places. We can actually use that energy locally. The fact that it's being sold to a Massachusetts utility is an accounting issue. The electrons are staying here, right? We're producing the energy here, and it will benefit us in many ways, and it will benefit the region. I think we have in Deepwater Wind a company that has shown a willingness to listen, to reach out to the neighbors, to scale back their facility, to put up some site barriers. So I think this is, this is an ideal site for a project like this. It's land that is already largely cleared. There will be some clearing that will be done, but it's not a force that we have to clear the whole thing. I think most importantly, Deepwater Wind is committed to preserving the agricultural quality of this land. They will, I think probably in 25 years, this land will be in better shape than it is now. They will, they're grading as little of the land as they have to, and they will be planning a ground cover. They have to post a bond to decommission these panels. And actually, they were quite clear that at the end of that time, these panels will be decommissioned. They'll go as e-waste, like our computers and televisions and things. This is a private transaction on a piece of land that will be developed one way or another. We have a choice. Do we want it to go to a business that generates revenue? And in 25 years, 20, 25 years, we might have another chance to make a decision.
Please, no.
I did, 29 Nuts Road.
Not okay.
So this is a private transaction. I think we want to be a business-friendly community. I think it's a chance for Simsbury to show itself as a leader in clean energy. I think, looking back, this solar farm will probably be an attraction. We have a chance to influence Deepwater Wind. I think there will be.
Folks, I'm going to ask people to give the same respect that the audience gave other speakers, please. Thank you.
I think they're open to the idea of some hiking trails. They're open to the idea of some educational opportunities, so I think we should work with them on that. And I think overall, this is a chance for Simsbury to not only, I think, represent those people who are living in the area, but I think look at the larger community and really the larger region, this is the region. This is our chance to support clean energy. We expect the lights to go on when we turn them on, so we need to be able to do our part.
Thank you. Okay. Left to right, back to front. Joe.
Try to wear a color.
Thank you. It's orange. Is that orange?
There you go.
Am I right?
Thousand bucks. Hi, I'm Joe Tracy from 40 Berkshire Way. I want to start off by thanking those of you that have walked the property for the Tobacco Valley Solar Farm. With me, I encourage the rest of you to take the hike with me. I appreciate your time. We ask that you, speaking to the Board, we ask that you approve the letters that Lisa has asked for as a part of the agenda of this meeting. As you know, Deepwater will probably file this week to avoid the favorable and responsible development provisions of SB 943, which I understand was approved. We need to accelerate the reviews and discussions that Lisa has asked for by town departments and enter into substantive discussions with DEEP, D-E-E-P, and the Department of Agriculture. My impression in talking to the Department of Agriculture is that they are very sympathetic to our position because of the impact on farm and forest land. We need them. We need DEEP. We need DOAG. We need the legislature. We need the Council of Municipalities and the Council on Environmental Quality to work together to ask the siting council to require a certificate of environmental compatibility and public need for this project. Otherwise, this project will go through. 175 acres of farm and forest land will disappear for 25 years. And some of it will disappear behind hundreds of feet of unsightly clay-colored vinyl fences along county and Hoskins roads. At least five neighborhoods will be affected, perhaps forever, with the loss of home value as an unknown at this point. The town may get up to $500 to $1 million in tax revenue per year, but it's on a depreciating asset. So over time, that tax revenue is going to decrease. In return, Massachusetts will get 24.6 megawatts of power at an unknown price, in spite of their regulations, which would prohibit such a development in Massachusetts. Deepwater and their New York hedge fund will be able to claim the largest solar farm in New England. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going left to right. I know some people came in. If you guys want to speak, I'll finish going there and then come back to you, if that's okay. Yes, sir. Yes. That's okay.
My name's Ed Gatis. I live at 23 Tim Clark Circle. And while I'm not directly involved in the sense that the solar farm is going to be near me, it is in my area. Couple things. One, despite all the publicity you have, this, a lot of people still are not aware that this is taking place. I talked to three of my neighbors, and none of them knew this was happening. One of them had just moved in and has children at Squadron Line School. And so when I told him that there were going to be solar panels there, he said, geez, I would have thought before buying here if I knew that was going to happen. So I think there is going to be impact on our housing values. How much and when it's going to take place, I'm not sure anybody knows. that this is taking place. I talked to three of my neighbors, and none of them knew this was happening. One of them had just moved in and has children at Squadron Line School. And so when I told him that there were going to be solar panels there, he said, geez, I would have thought before buying here if I knew that was going to happen. So I think there is going to be impact on our housing values. How much and when it's going to take place, I'm not sure anybody knows. I'm also concerned about the current environmental impact, because I understand that the property that's being built on was on property that had a lot of chemicals on it. So now we're doing construction there. What impact is that going to have? I also understand that the town is going to be required for any emergency response that takes place on that property. How much, what is that cost going to be in the future? What's the potential dangers from that? The other thing I was really concerned about is the fact that we're bypassing our zoning approval. The fact that this state is allowing that to happen is really disturbing to me. The tax benefit to this town is minimal in the long run, and I think that you're going to lose some of that as the housing values go down in that area also. A gentleman mentioned that in 25 years that the property isn't going to be in better shape. Of 25 years, I hope I'm here, okay? But chances are, I'm not going to be. So the loss of what we're going to have take place with this construction and with it being close to our school, I think, is a very detriment to the town of Simsbury.
Thank you. Okay, we'll continue going this way, back to front. We'll go to Ika, and then you next. How's that?
I have to follow up.
No, Ika, I'm going to let you say. SCTV, if you could, hopefully you can capture Ika back there. She's got a bad foot.
So, we just have a 21 Notch Road. Three things. Solar panels are on schools all over the country. Another thing is the original site, it's around 280 acres, which is smaller than 200 acres of Simsbury farms, and only 153 acres will actually have panels on it. So to keep that scale back in perspective, that's all discussed at the Deepwater presentation. And the third one, I knew I would forget it.
The largest one?
Oh, it's not the largest one in New England. There's two other larger ones, 50 megawatts. This is only 28.6. So this is not the largest proposal in New England. One's at Canterbury, Brooklyn in Connecticut, and we got one in New Pantry. Those are both 50 watt, 50 megawatt sizes. So that's misinformation, that it's the largest one in New England. There's two other larger ones.
Thank you. All right.
You can read it all over.
This is Tracy.
Right. Right.
Diane Tracy, 40 Berkshire Way. A few things have been covered already by people, which is great. I've gone to all these meetings, and I'm not totally against a solar farm. I think that it is, it is something that we need to look for in the future. My biggest concern after last week's meeting was some of the answers, as some of you have talked about, why they didn't know how many panels. That was troublesome to me. They have a proposal. Why wouldn't they be able to answer that? The claim that they'll be, in the newspaper, they claim that they'll be the biggest taxpayer in town. And we don't really know that, one of the biggest taxpayers in town. I'm sorry. And in listening to the meetings, we don't really have a concrete answer on that. And as pointed out before, there is depreciation every year on these solar panels. They also claimed that they wouldn't be using any services, electric, water, everything. But in order to clean those solar panels from all the stuff that's going on, I'm assuming they've got to use water. At least that's what all the other solar farms do. And we heard so many times, I was so tired of it, why don't we buy the land? Why doesn't the town buy the land? And my understanding is that the farmer that farms most of that land right now wanted to buy the land. His name is Mr. Bugatti. He has a big farm over in East Windsor. He's the one that farms most of it right now. He did want to buy it. For whatever reason, they turned him down. Maybe it wasn't enough money. I don't know. It was also said the other night that it was unknown what tax credits would be available. But industry publications that I look at, they're pretty plain and simple. As long as the project is fully operational by 2018, 30, they get a 30% federal tax, investment tax credit. So my concerns here are that they're not answering the questions. And right now, the industry doesn't have a viable plan to get rid of the solar farms. And that answer that he gave the other night, that in 20 years, there will be a plan, is not really reassuring. Nuclear power plants still struggle after 60 years. First one came on board in 1957. We still don't know what to do with this stuff. The answer to the question, why such a massive solar farm, was answered at the last selectman meeting that I came to. Their environmentalist was out there, and my husband and I kept saying, why so massive? Why so big? And she said it plainly, we all figured this out, it wasn't hard, that it has to be this big in order to make it worth their while. And we were told to rely on their reputation for building the Block Island Wind Farm. And this company selected to build the largest solar farm in New England, though it's been pointed out, maybe it's not the largest, has never done this before. They have no track record. They have no apparent experience in building even a small solar farm. Maintenance, security, design, and aesthetics can't be evaluated or compared to a wind-turned-by farm in the ocean. In conclusion, I'll offer up what I offered the other night, and this is Connecticut's fault. The idea that Massachusetts selected this area for a solar farm is disheartening. The further idea that a New York City hedge fund, DE Shaw, is investing in a Rhode Island company to build this farm in Connecticut is discouraging as well. Why is our state left out of the equation? Why is the energy generated and sold to ever-source to be used in Massachusetts? Why do the residents of Simsbury or the state not receive some discount on electrical use to make this palatable? This may be a wonderful green addition to our energy resources, but Connecticut needs thoughtful and protective policies in place as we plan the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll continue right. I think we got everyone. Did I miss anyone who'd like to speak? Do you guys want to speak?
I'm Ed Robel, 100 Hoskins Road. So I'm sure I don't have anything that's actually new that hasn't already been said, but just being located physically right, you know, on Hoskins Road, we're directly across from Squadron Line School, directly across from, I think, from a large parcel at Hoskins Road. That is a very well-traveled, as everyone here knows, area, and it's, you know, it's a beautiful piece of the land. It's like, it's an area where people traveling to the west and north in Simsbury, it's very, very visible. So not knowing the particulars of what can be done, and I'll leave it to, you know, I'd support any efforts by the town to do what we can to, at least, if not eliminating development of that aspect, at least mitigate to the extent possible to preserve the physical beauty of that area. Again, it's very, very visible. We have actually, you know, 100 Hoskins as well as 96 Hoskins. We've always tried to avoid having that developed. You know, we've been approached many times to develop, trying to preserve as much open space as possible. So we're really just supportive of maintaining that to the extent possible, the open space. This is simply that.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Did we miss anyone who wants to speak? Bob?
Bob Beinsteine, 26 Fairview Street, right here in Simsbury in the center. So I'm not going to try to do any mind-changing. I guess I want to start, I really want to commend the people, you know, Rob Parisi and I have a lot of disagreements, but that Simsbury solar site has become, within some bounds, a really great place for civil discussion about this. People that disagree, posting their ideas, posting their facts, but a pretty good discourse. So I really want to commend everybody to be posting all this. Really vitriolic in the beginning, and I think everybody's calmed down. It's, I think it's serving a really good function. Couple of points I want to make. I posted some stuff about this today. This idea that Simsbury should control energy infrastructure in our town is a little bit dangerous, in my view. I believe we should have input, and I applaud you guys for taking the party role. That said, one of the reasons we've got financial problems in this town is because we're 169 individual fiefdoms that don't really share a whole lot of stuff. Energy infrastructure is chaos that way. Energy, we all get to turn on our lights in the morning and the night because, you know, ISO New England and the National Grid, people manage load, right? As carbon, decarbonization, climate, et cetera, change, that grid's got to evolve. We're going to have a lot more decentralized load. That's actually good for communities, because it builds in redundancy, it builds in reliability. Okay. I don't think anybody in this group is saying, don't do solar. Just not here. I think, and this boy, I usually get a lot of hate mail when I say this, but the whole issue of private land transactions, I don't always love capitalism. I don't always love what we get out of capitalism, but this is a capitalist country. People that live in that neighborhood bought their homes on this beautiful open space. I get it. I love the open space in Simsbury, but it's not designated open space. It's designated for development. Guys that own it, Griffon Land, they got a choice. They can sell it. They can sell it to anybody they want. They cannot sell it to anybody they want. Their call, right? Until our system of government changes, if you like the open space, you have two choices. Value it while you got it, or buy it. And then go to the zoning board and say, I'd like to change agriculture, open space, whatever you want to do. I want to touch on SB 943. The way I read it, and I am not an attorney, and I said this very publicly, the way DWW's designing this project, the way they designed the D and D side, decommissioning side of it, they already meet the new law. And there's what they call a presumption of rebuttal to the farm codicil that's in there, that says, you've got to be able to return it to productive farming at the end, and if you do, you've effectively rebutted it. Well, they already did that before the law changes, so I'm not sure why there's so much fuss about. They're trying to get in under the wire. There is reasonable, there's room for reasonable debate about what our role as a community should be, but I don't think there's a lot of room to start telling people what they can do with their property, as long as they follow the rules. And the last thing I want to touch on, there's so much misinformation out here. I've said this at every meeting, go get facts, find peer-reviewed data. I think, you know, this young lady on the end here has done a good job of going out and finding real sources and looking things up. This idea that Mass is grabbing our land, I don't agree with you, but I think you've done a good job with it. And that's okay, by the way. I'm really a big fan of that. This idea that Mass is grabbing our land. Connecticut chose to enter into an RFP with three states and three utilities, and the rules were set in the beginning. Tell me when I run out of time, because I'll go over.
You got another minute.
Oh, cool. Almost done. We all agreed to how this was going to work. We bought power from out of state, they bought power from out of state. This wasn't somebody coming in and grabbing our stuff. This was an agreement upfront. If you disagree with that, there's room for that. Call your legislators, tell them you never want to see that happen again. Not a problem. Home values, there, I have yet to be able to find things about home values around a solar array. The best thing I found is this NREL piece that I put up, National Renewable Energy Lab, that compared it to solar wind farms, or not solar, wind farms in residential areas. And they found in their study that there was no decrease, and their hypothesis, actually that was a National Association of Realtors study that they cited, their hypothesis is that wind farms create a lot more impact because of, you know, the spinning and the flicker effects and the noise and that kind of thing. So we're still looking, by the way, from Clean Energy Task Force. We'll be looking for facts, and we're going to post them as we get them. Environmental risk, we can argue about this all day, but there's almost no environmental risk from this thing. It's a very passive, very minor sort of thing. And there's, the things that we don't know, we should go get information on.
Bob, thank you.
We're done?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll stop, then I have only one more bullet. I was good.
Ah, so close.
No worries.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? All right, seeing none, we will move on with our agenda and begin with the first selectwoman's report. I did highlight again that the town was assigned a AAA bond rating by S and P Global Ratings. This is the second time it's in there. I thought it was worth repeating. So very proud of that bond rating. I did want to let folks know that we did have the budget referendum, and not many people showed up, about 6.5% of the population, so let's do better next time.
I think there was more at the meeting the other night.
There may have been. The Board of Finance has set the mill rate at 39.99, and that's a combination of the fire district and the towns. I wanted to give a very important notice to the residents of Simsbury. Because the state budget has not yet been adopted, the estimated amount of revenue from the state of Connecticut indicated on your tax bill is subject to change. Your tax bill also reflects current state law, which was, does not allow municipalities to assess a mill rate above 32 mills on motor vehicles. So you're going to be taxed at 32 on your motor vehicle. We do expect that law to change in the next couple of weeks. The mill rate tax cap on motor vehicles may be increased or eliminated altogether by the state legislature. Once the state has adopted a budget, the town of Simsbury may need to adjust your tax levy to address any changes in municipal aid. And what that means is you may be receiving supplemental tax bills, because we do not know what is going to happen. Just about 15 minutes before this meeting, Representative Hampton sent me an email with new numbers from the governor, in which he is proposing eliminating educational cost sharing for the town of Simsbury, so that's over $6 million reduction. We do expect that to change, so that is not a final number. It's not a number to panic over, but these are big numbers, big concerns that we're facing. And so it will be a challenge for this board and the Board of Finance as we seek to adjust. Representative Hampton told me that he is pushing very hard for a budget before July 1. If that doesn't happen, it's very difficult to run the state of Connecticut without a budget and not go into a bigger deficit. So we're going to be monitoring that and doing everything we can to limit the impact on Simsbury taxpayers, but this is a brace-for-impact moment. All right, so on that happy note, we do have some good things. I see Lisa Cream, Director of the Simsbury Public Library, and one of my heroes, along with Jerry Toner, and Tom, okay, who'd I miss? And everyone who's in the audience, Sean. But I do want to let folks know that there is a trail cleanup at Rotary Park that will be held on July 7 at 10:00 a.m. to help keep our trails clean. A lot of what we do in town is because volunteers get together and pitch in to keep this community great, so thank you for organizing that. Wanted to announce that there will be a repair cafe, toss it away. So if you need something that needs fixing, there are going to be a group of people together who will help you fix it at the library, and that will be July 29. The latest edition of the senior communicator is out and hot off the presses with rate activities for our senior citizens in town. The renters' rebate program has begun, and Social Services is now accepting applications for renter rebates program that runs through October 2017. If you are interested in applying, it is income-sensitive. Please reach out to Miki La Cour's Beck at 860-658-3283. If you have old medication, we wanted to make folks aware that we do have a medication drop box located in the lobby of the police department, so please don't toss them in the toilet or in the trash. You want to drop them off where they can be disposed of safely. First, in a series of information coming out on the Emerald Ash Borer, which is an insect that is attacking trees in all of New England and is now here in Connecticut, it is a serious threat to the trees, the ash trees in the state of Connecticut, and there's some information there, and where you can find out more information. You saw this year in our budget that we did add a line item addition to address this on town-owned trees, but we're urging residents to keep an eye on that, because it's coming, and it can cause serious damage. Reevaluation of real estate is still underway. Wanted to remind folks that the Board of Selectmen has adopted a carry-on, carry-out policy for Simsbury parks that begins July 1. Want to thank everyone for pitching in and working together to keep our parks clean. The Friends of Simsbury Library Annual Used Book Sale is working hard to collect books, so please, if you have books to donate, you can do that during this time period. If you aren't aware, there is now a Simsbury community calendar where we are posting any event in Simsbury. So if you have something you want to post, you are welcome to do it. It doesn't, it's not required to be a town event. Looking forward to this Friday, Celebrate America as the Talca Mountain Musical Festival kicks off, and all the events at the Simsbury Performing Arts Center. In terms of economic development, we did want to let folks know that the library is offering 30 business books in 30 minutes on July 5, and you can register for that online. We post additional links. I'm not sure the link for the Town of Simsbury parking study, oh, it does work, all right, we got that up. So we're excited about that. So you can see, if you didn't, if you missed our last exciting meeting where we did a presentation on the parking study, it actually was very interesting, but there's a link to it there, and you can sort of see parking issues in the town center that, and what we can do to address them, so we're excited about that. And with that, we will move on to approved tax refunds. May I have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $647.21?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The motion carries unanimously. We're going on to Jerry Toner. I think sometimes people forget, and just after the budget, it's a great time to recognize our department heads, because what they do every day reflect the values of the town and what you fund. Very pleased to have Jerry here to talk about public gathering permits. Why don't you let us know what you've got?
Two events, one, actually, we submitted, we were able to do these due to the lack of impact of both events. We did these by email distribution to the committee. The two events, one, July 28, the Farmington Valley Jewish Congregation requested to do a Sabbath service at Schultz Park. That would be prior to one of the HSO concerts.
So, Jerry, we're going to do these in two sections. If you could just do the Farmington Valley one first, I'm going to recuse because I'm a member of the temple, like Chris handled that, and then I'll come back for the second one.
The, I said, the congregation requested a 45, approximately a 45-minute Sabbath service prior to the HSO concert. They expect about 60 people, they will utilize public parking in the area. Most of the folks, I understand, will attend the concert after that. Did not require any road closures and not be serving food and beverage. Pretty simple ceremony. So, the committee had no issue with it at all, and voted unanimously to forward it on.
So, let's take a motion on that one, Jerry, before, are you done with that one?
Absolutely.
Any questions for Jerry?
How long is the service, Jerry?
About 45 minutes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, you probably said that. Thank you.
So, do I have a motion to approve the July 28 public gathering permit for the Farmington Valley Jewish Congregation Sabbath service at Schultz Park?
So moved.
Second? Any further conversation? All approved, say aye.
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 Any againsts? So moved.
All right, Jerry.
Okay. The second event is an annual event, it's been in the community for a number of years, the Simsbury Fly-In and Car Show. Bill Thomas oversees that event. Again, this one is being repeated, not a lot of major impact. The police department did need to be advised, we actually work, because this involves a couple of towns, they also work with Granby and East Granby on this event. But the police department, Farmington Valley Health District were the two that had input. They, as I said, they were able to pose questions to the event organizer, there were no issues. It seems in the past it's run very smoothly, and so it was unanimously voted to forward on, per your approval.
Thank you. I may have a motion to approve the public gathering permit for the Simsbury Fly-In and Car Show on September 17.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions for Jerry? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We did separate the next public gathering permit, separate, usually we do them all together, but this was an unusual circumstance. The previously approved public gathering permit for the Two Left Feet Blues Festival on August 25th through 27th at the PAC did not include approval of the use of the site for camping or RV camping during the festivals, the proposed use was not on the original application. So, they didn't discuss it because it just wasn't presented in the application. Currently, tent and RV sites are being sold for this event online. The PAC has been informed that the proposed use of the facility for camping in tents and RVs is not currently approved or permitted under local zoning. The proposed use would require a text amendment to Article 5, Section B, temporary uses under the zoning regulations. Whether or not the proposed use of the site is permissible accordingly depends upon the approval of a text amendment by the zoning board. If the text amendment is approved, the town must still conduct a review of the proposed use of the public gathering permit process, which also considers safety and health issues, and I believe you have additional papers included from the Chief of Police who had questions, and the Public Health District as well. And that's why we do the public gathering, so that we can make sure that we're keeping everyone safe and that all the people have the opportunity to understand what the event is and address any concerns in advance. Accordingly, the Board of Selectmen will need to provide final approval of the public gathering process once it is completed. One thing that was mentioned, I believe, was, you know, fires at the campsite. I know that the fire chief has indicated he doesn't have a problem with it, I do. I, you know, no matter what this board does, I'm not okay with fires on the website. But Jerry, can you speak to this, and sort of what, and Tom, I might invite you to speak because we've been involved in conversations. On the one hand, you know, we, the PAC is run by a bunch of volunteers, and they do their very best, and so we do try to accommodate to the best we can, but we, our legal obligation is to try and stay within the bounds, well, not to try, but to succeed in staying within the bounds of the law, but looking for solutions as well. So, Jerry, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, specifically, as I said, as part of our meeting, you know, had we known, there probably, I think there would have been, and one of the opinions we asked for was from the Health District in terms of what does this create, what sort of impact on the site. They did give a, provided that, that opinion to us, and certainly from a public safety standpoint, the police would, you know, I believe, had, you know, would have had questions and do have questions on exactly, you know, what sort of coverage this would require and, you know, how much actually are we looking at, what, you know, really, what are we looking at? I guess we're the maximum capacity that's being advertised for 100 RVs, and I don't know, you know, how many that really translates into, but I think the police usually take, speak for them, I think they have to take the stance of, well, it could, you know, it could be full, they're at full capacity, and they've got to be prepared for that. So, things like that, I think, would have, you know, would come up, and we'll, you know, we can certainly address that when you, when it comes back as a committee, we will, you know, reconvene and have all that information and go forward.
Tom, can you speak to the approval process of getting the text amendment, so if they are?
Yeah, that's the other piece, just to be clear, you know, we looked long and hard at this with town council, and the conclusion of town council, working with our planning folks, was that this, that camping is currently not a practice that's permitted under the zoning code. So, in order for this to move forward at all, there would have to be some, there would have to be a text amendment permitting it. And so, that is something, obviously, that doesn't come before this board, that'll end up in front of the zoning commission. But I think Jerry's pointed out that very well, that there's still a whole series of steps that have to be covered in the public gathering permit process, which does end with you. So, essentially, this is more perhaps of an informational nature than an action item for you. But until, until that, until a text amendment is actually created, number one, and until Jerry's able to reconvene this and have the questions raised, I think, by the police in the Farmington Valley Health District about their concerns, it won't be before you. Those things have to happen.
Opening up for questions? Chris?
If this ends up being a no, is it better for it to be a no quick or a no later? So, let's say zoning doesn't approve, let's say there are some concerns and issues that emerge with the police department. Part of why I'm asking the question, I think if this went through the normal process, the vetting in large, my guess is we might not be doing this, and now what we're trying to do is be respectful to where the PAC is. So, I'm just trying to evaluate if we get into the middle or late part of July with a final decision, what's the, what's the impact of that relative to the contract with the promoter, credibility of the PAC?
It's a good question, Chris, and we don't know what, what the actual contractual relationship is. We do know that all these things are still up online, and so it would appear that over time, it's possible that more people will purchase RV sites or camping sites. So, but, but in terms of how, whether that complicates the legal relationship or not, I can't, I can't play.
So, the one thing, I think, you can park at the state lot, so people can park there. The question is really about camping, you can't charge, obviously, if people are parking at the state lot, but there is, I think that's one thing that was considered by council that he mentioned. So, that is an option, but again, there are no electric hookups, there's no water, there's...
Is overnight parking, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting.
Yeah, no, please.
Is overnight parking permitted by the state in the state law?
As we understand it.
Because sometimes it's not.
Mike?
In the past, back in the September Fest, not at September Fest, but the art show, people would park there overnight, whether it was with the state's approval or not, I do not know.
But was that just equipment, or was that actually the people?
No, there were people inside the vehicles at night.
That was generally vendors, right?
Yes, it was the vendors.
So, not our property, though, right?
It's not our, that's not our...
Not our property.
So, with respect to what's going on, so they're going to put 100 RVs on the field?
No, it's in the back, I think their proposal is in the back parking lot.
There's no way in hell 100 RVs fit in the back parking lot.
Well, that's why we got through the public gathering permit, I think that might have been better.
Well, it certainly, Mike Lynn participates in the process, and I know that questions will be asked about whether or not that's sustainable back there, or there are concerns about discharge from vehicles, so.
That's, I mean, that's my concern, is what happens if one of these things lets their tank go back in? I mean, that's a conservation area, we got wetlands, I mean, it's, there's a fair amount of liability associated with this, not to mention the folks sleeping there. I mean, it's unfortunate that the PAC board has put themselves and us in this position. This, I mean, I don't know why this wasn't disclosed at the time of the original public gathering, but that doesn't make any sense to me from the PAC board's side. Do they know that we're talking about this tonight?
Yes.
And they chose not to come in and talk to us about it?
I, I don't, I don't know that they, I don't think they were expecting any action on it tonight.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, assuming this gets through the public gathering permit, I still have concerns about the precedent we're setting here by letting campers and folks sleep down in the field. You know, again, I'm willing to hear that, you know, the chief and other folks could eventually get comfortable with it, but to Chris's point, is it better to insinuate that maybe no, this isn't a good idea now versus something later?
Jerry, do we know how many people have signed up for camping?
I do not, no. I'm not aware of that.
I mean, there's a point, I mean, I'm familiar with that field. I mean, 100 campers and what, 75 campsites? I mean, it's almost a psychological study of what you do when you put people on top of each other.
On access to fire, on access to water. Tell them they can't drink anymore. And that is really a lot of people...
Quarter potties, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And for, God forbid, anyone who wants to look good and walk around in high heels, it's, it's not, as Sean's point, that's really tight, you're not giving a lot of space.
Sure, I made the point about heels, but yeah, it's a...
Jerry?
I would be really concerned about the, the land back there is somewhat, you know, sometimes it's wet, sometimes it's unstable, and I think one of the town officials wrote about erosion that could happen when you put that much heavy vehicle on that land, which is, the Conservation Commission keeps a very close eye on, you know, to their credit. So, I would have some serious concerns about that.
Does, excuse me, Lisa?
Mike?
Do we know if there's physically enough time for them to get this amendment through?
I believe there is. I believe it'll take a special meeting, but they could conceivably do that.
Okay, so, in theory, that could happen. I am concerned about finding out at maybe not the 12th hour, but it's after 9:00, if not 10 o'clock, that suddenly they're looking to potentially do this, and it does bother me how this process has gone, through no fault of anybody sitting around here. I would have thought they would have given us a heads up when we approved it probably a few months ago.
In February, I think.
All right.
Sean?
Turn that into, and again, this isn't a procedural, it's a vision, this is not what I envisioned the Performing Arts Center being used for when we transferred stewardship to the, to the PAC group. It was, you know, concerts that enhance the community and folks have a nice time to go home, folks have a nice time and patronize businesses, not spend the night, and we incur additional liability because they can talk about insurance and everything else, it's still town property. So, we're still getting sued if something happens down there. And do we, do we want to put the taxpayers on the hook for that, for an event that is outside what I think we all had thought about and envisioned? And it might be a great event, it might go perfectly well, but again, this doesn't appear to be in the scope of what at least I thought I was transferring from a responsibility standpoint, and if we were still the deciding board, I'm not sure I would have agreed to this as a, you know, as the authority on it, so.
So, there are a couple of things that could happen, and I do want to make the point that the PAC board is all volunteers.
Yep.
And appreciate, and, you know, and God knows, I'm not perfect, so a little bit of leeway and understanding, and these volunteers give it their time to do it. But one of the things going through the public gathering permit could do is limit the amount for this year, and then not, we could not set precedence, and, I mean, there are lots of things that can be done through the public gathering. So, it is a, it, right, it, this, it's unfortunate we're in this situation today, thinking about it. This was brought to our attention about two weeks ago, we were going to bring it to this board, but at that point, we didn't have legal councils of final opinion on it, so we were still...
Yes, it took a fair amount of time. We wanted to make sure that we, it was thoroughly vetted with council.
And so, that, that's, which is why it's coming now, yes.
So, I mean, I think, I think everyone's between, a bit between a rock and a hard place, right? We've gotten to a place that we probably wouldn't have if we had thoughtfully gone through the process, and to me, there's two courses of action. One is what we're doing here, which is to see what we might be able to approve, but I do think the other is for the PAC to get in contact with the concert promoter and say we have a potential issue here, what's involved in backing out of the camping piece. It may be a huge issue to them, it might not be, it's just an initial conversation, and I don't know if they've had that conversation or not, but that's also another fairly, possibly, you know, easy solution to this, so.
So, last I heard, there were not that many people who had signed up, so that may be something.
We've never, we've never gotten the numbers, Lisa, so that's correct. But no one has ever told us that, you know, they're rapidly showing up.
So, one thing we can do is do a motion to delay the final approval of the PAC's revised public gathering permit for the Two Left Feet, pending a successful text amendment, the zoning permitting camping on town property on a limited basis or, and I would say, it's kind of a strange situation, right? Because they, the zoning would give the permit, but this board may not, even with the permit, permit it, because it's a town-used property. And approval of, and have them go through a second public gathering permit process to discuss the details of the proposed camping in connection with the event. So, we can delay that, let them go through the process. I think Chris's point is well-taken, that they should let the sponsors know that this is a potential problem, and they may need to give refunds should it not pass.
I think we can only advise that, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Look at Mike and then Cheryl.
I am very concerned about not making a request of the PAC board to stop selling sites as this ASAP, like tomorrow, and that potentially inform their concert partner that that may not be something that happens, even if the zoning goes through, this board may decide not to approve it.
So, would you like it, it could be a require, the PAC to notify, is that your preference?
I would, yes, I would feel better about that, I really do.
Cheryl?
Yes, well, I would say we should strongly advise them to do that, but I want to be sensitive to the fact that we should not be overstepping our authority on the zoning board. I mean, they have to deliberate and make their decision without us, you know, influencing that or prejudging that. So, I think we have to let this process go forward, and it's not really our place here to prejudge this before the zoning board considers it, so.
And the other thing we can do is, just because it's permitted under zoning, we as the landowners can prohibit it nonetheless, but Sean?
Yeah, and I mean, that's my point, is, yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we get involved in a text amendment, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I agree with you, I'm not in favor of fires on town property. It's nice that, you know, it can happen, I don't think that's a good idea.
So, Jerry, you can probably let them know that this board is not inclined to permit fires. I think we can say that there is a overwhelming consensus.
I mean, you know, it's just, it's just, I don't know, it's just seem like, so they're going to sell alcohol at the concert, and then supposedly everybody's going to stop when they hit the parking lot? I mean, come on, that's, I'm the youngest person on this board, but I was a board yesterday. You know, and I'm sure it's a lovely show, but, you know, I'm sure the show, I mean, we got the Aaron Horse in, we got the Simsbury in, we got the 1820 House, there's plenty of lovely places to sleep in this town.
There's camping around the area too, right? There are campsites within driving distance, but my question is for the tents, they're there, where are they parking? Did they indicate that?
I don't think that's been made clear.
Okay. And they said that there were showers off-site? Any ideas? No?[1782.33] the public gathering. I'm going to stop right there.
We need to let that go.
We'll let that go through the normal and regular.
It's going to be hotter than hell, too.
So.
Lisa, I just had, I think we're talking 5,000, 5,000 to 8,000 of revenue for, I mean, if you take, you got 100 campers, right, at $100 each, or 50 campers at $100 each? And the campsites are what, $75 each?
I think that's right.
Okay, so I think you're talking about an $8,000 revenue item for the promoter, and they've got to have some expenses with it. Just to put it in scope, and I would, if I was on the PAC, I'd want to call the promoter and see if we could negotiate our way out of this, so I do encourage that conversation to happen.
Okay, so at this point, we may not even need a motion, just to let it, just basically informing the board, other than to say that we are going to delay the final approval until the text amendment and it's gone through the public vetting process of the public gathering process.
If they watch us on tape, they'll get a pretty good flavor for our concerns.
May not be happening.
No fires.
All righty. Tom, do you think I need a motion on this?
I don't think so. The remaining question is whether or not staff here is, we can certainly work on a communication that they review their current contractual relationship and make sure that the promoter knows that this is not yet a settled issue.
I would say that is the consensus of the board, and you can say that is the consensus of the board unless somebody objects to that language. Okay. All right. And I do want to thank the members of the PAC board. It is a hard job. They're doing the best they can, and we appreciate all their efforts. Going on to item D, approve the submission of application for the Connecticut State Construction Grant in the amount of approximately 408,000, 408,000, how do I say that?
408,000.
Okay. Dollars, and this is for the renovation of the library. As you know, this was approved through the budget process, and I invite Lisa Karim to come up and speak to this.
Alex, it's safe. It's safe. You can come up.
This grant will help to fray the cost of the lower-level improvement project that will add program space to the existing facility. As you will recall, matching funds from the town for the board's capital improvement plan approved during the budget process will support this project, and it was approved at referendum through the general approval of the budget, and a generous donation of the $90,000 from the Friends of the Library will support the project.
I'm not really sure what more I can add to that. It's to convert the unused portion of the library at the moment, or unfinished space, to flexible program space, which we will share with the Friends in partnership.
And you had a presentation on that through. All right, so with that, may I have a motion to approve the town's application for a Connecticut State Construction Grant to fund a portion of the library lower-level improvement project in the amount of approximately 408,000. I'm not going to try that one again. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa. Before the board is a request to authorize the first select woman to execute the attached license and indemnification agreement permitting Fiddler's Green to use parking at Eno Memorial Hall with prior approval of town staff during events at the Performing Arts Center with a modified expiration date of December 31, 2018. If you'll see in what you have in your packet, it says 2017. We're requesting an extension to 2018 because this is something we do every year. It's a new owner. We're trying something new and exciting. We actually have a contract. That was given to us by council and reviewed by the owner and who is pleased with the agreement. The town of Simsbury has historically approved use of Eno Hall parking by Fiddler's Green during events at the PAC with prior approval of town staff at Eno Memorial Hall. The attached agreement was drafted by town council and acceptable to Fiddler's Green. An extension of the contract for a period of one year has also been requested. I'll open it up to questions before I take the motion. Cheryl?
Is there any agreement that goes the other way regarding events at the senior center?
So, no, but there is a tentative, and as you know with the parking study, mutual, and they do let people park there as a matter of course. Well, but this is a little different. Yeah, we can, and a mutual shared parking agreements.
We generally don't have situations where we're requesting, where there's overflow that's significant enough to request the space. And it's not ever, you know, it's not tied to PAC events or anything else. So we, there are situations that go on all the time where one car or more will end up parking a little over the line.
Happens to me every fourth Wednesday.
There you go.
But you're right, there is mutual shared parking. We've had multiple conversations with them, and the good news with Fiddler's Green is most of their heavy use occurs after four, and most of the senior centers occurs before. So we, there is spillage over there, and we've been mutually appreciative and generous, but a mutual shared parking agreement, as discussed by the parking study, which is really exciting and online, might be called for. I agree.
Well, that's, I mean, if we're formalizing the agreement with a new owner, that's the only reason I ask, if we need to take a step to do that the other way.
Right, technically, right now, we're getting indemnification for their parking, and so they have yet to ask us for indemnification of our parking over this. So we're in good shape right now. We can certainly consider that as we move forward.
Sean?
So just to be clear, this is so that their patrons have the ability to utilize their facility, not for them to charge or use our lot in any way to service the Performing Arts Center?
No, no.
Okay, because it doesn't say that.
Not going to be any $10 to perk here.
They can't put a kid out there and collect money. Perfect. Thank you.
But that's a good point to raise. Any other questions? May I have a motion to authorize the first select woman to execute the attached license and indemnification agreement permitting Fiddler's Green to use parking in Eno Memorial Hall with prior approval of town staff?
So moved.
Yep, 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 go for it. That's good enough.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. All right, going on to item F.
Lisa, I'm going to recuse myself.
Oh, yes, thank you. Can record reflect that Mr. Payne recused himself at 7:18? Item F is to reschedule the public hearing on revisions to solid waste and recycling ordinance. Before the board is a request to reschedule the public hearing on proposed modifications to the town's existing ordinances as they relate to collection and disposal of solid waste and recycling for August 14 at 6:00 PM. At the board's regular meeting on June 12, the board set a public hearing date of June 26 tonight to consider proposed changes to the town's ordinance governing the collection and disposal of solid waste and recycling. Town staff determined that notice on, of the amount of over $5,000, given the late nature of it at that point, the expedited.
It wasn't expedited. This was what it was going to cost us to place it in the heart of the current.
So the reason why is, we couldn't put in our local Farmington Valley Press. There was not time to do that. So it was just, we, Tom checked with me, and we concur that was not advisable. After conferring with town council to confirm that the delay would not be problematic from a legal standpoint, the Director of Administrative Services, Tom, in consultation with me, elected not to proceed with the notification. Setting the public hearing date on this matter for August 14 will permit the town to utilize the less expensive means of notification through the Farmington Valley Press. The financial impact savings of approximately $4,800 in costs avoided, so we're very excited to offer that as a solution. With that, may I have a motion to reschedule the public hearing on proposed modifications to the town's existing ordinance as they relate to the collection and disposal of solid waste and recycling for August 14 at 6:00 PM?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
So, is this going to be the only thing we're doing that night?
No.
We typically don't have an August meeting. And I'm fine having an August meeting, but again, there's not a lot of people around.
I was hoping to cancel the July meeting, but it looks like we're not going to be able to do that. So we had a...
I mean, again, as long as we feel like people that actually want to show up and speak to it can be, but we've tried to avoid, you know, public hearings in the summer for a reason.
Would there be any?
If we can do it in September, and it doesn't harm the process.
Can you give me a date in September?
Sorry, I'm not trying to gum things up.
No, it's a good point. Good point.
Probably nobody's going to show up, but I'd rather do it at a meeting when folks can be here.
It is a very exciting ordinance, so.
You never know. People yell at us for a lot of different reasons, so we should make sure we give folks access to do that.
We're changing the date. Stay out there.
I don't care. As long as, you know, as long as we feel like folks are going to...
No, I think that's advisable.
That's a good point.
So if we remove it.
September 11th, right?
I believe that's going to be the, just to check.
September 11th?
Yes, second Monday of the month, right?
Yeah, September 11th.
And there's no conflict with the Jewish holidays on that date, because I know we do move some of our September and October dates.
I can't swear to that. It's not coming up here. If you give me a second, I have one other source.
Someone want to look up the Jewish holidays?
I'm working on it right now. Wednesday the 20th.
Tom, I think we're okay.
Rashashon is the 20th.
Then we're good.
Hunk of course, the 30th.
You sure you got the right year, Tabad?
It's 2017.
Okay, I'm with you. All right, we're good.
September 11?
Mm-hmm.
September 11.
So that's a friendly, I think we had a motion and a second. Cheryl, did you make the motion?
I think so, yes.
Do you accept the?
With a friendly amendment.
Second.
With a friendly amendment.
With a friendly amendment.
All right. And that is September 11, correct? 6:00 PM? Tom, you got that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Before the board of selectmen, our draft letters to the local land use commissions in Simsbury to review the deepwater wind project in advisory capacity in order to assist the town in proceedings before the citing council, members of the public made mention of the fact, and it is accurate, that this does not go through local land use boards, but there's nothing prohibiting us from seeking their good counsel and advice and recommendations. I'm recommending to this board that we make that formal request. I have been in touch with the chairs, so they do know that this is coming. I've asked them to place it on their, one of their July agendas. They often like to have it first and then do it at a second meeting, accept it, and then do it over two meetings. I told them we didn't know that they would have the luxury of that timeframe, so we will wait to see when the petition is filed and what the timeframe is during that process, but we do think the town would benefit greatly from having their recommendations. Also, before you is a request that I will write to the Commissioner of Agriculture and the Commissioner of the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. I've been in contact with both commissioners and informed them, that I intended to write a letter on behalf of the board requesting that they review the project comprehensively, which is basically the same level of review at a 943B application. They are not required to do so. There's no burden of proof shift if they file, if the deepwater comes in early, but I think at the very least, we should have that level of review. That would be helpful to this board and to the residents of Simsbury, and really to the residents of the state of Connecticut in having the most accurate information. So they are aware of that. I have reached out to Senator Wickes and Representative Hampton to write similar letters. I have heard from Representative Hampton. I think Mr. Wickes is a little busy today, given the negotiations going on, but he will do that as well. I also reached out to the Connecticut Council on Municipalities, which is our lobbying group and represents over 164 towns for the state of Connecticut. They actually worked with Simsbury and the other municipalities of the state of Connecticut to support the bill, which has become law according to CCM, and they will write a letter of support to the commissioners requesting a comprehensive review as well. So grateful to them for that. Not before the board, but I did want to let the board know. I have also reached out to the Historical Society, asked them to review specifically the barns, if there's any matters of historical preservation or interest that we should be aware of, and also to the Farmington Valley Watershed Association for the water evaluation. They are experts in water locally. So those are underway. And with that, I will open it up to discussion. If people want to talk about the letters, Tom does have the copies that we'll be signing.
Your version said, we clarified the finals to make it clear that it's 289 acres. That's the last number we have anyway, and that the scale is a 26.4 megawatt solar project.
Again, we don't even know because they haven't filed the application that has anticipated.
That's the information we have as of June 26.
So, if there are questions, may I have a motion to approve the letters to the zoning plan and Conservation Commission requesting advisory opinions on the deepwater wind solar proposal once a petition for declaratory ruling from the Connecticut Siding Council is filed with the Siding Council.
I'll make that motion with that they do it as expeditiously as possible, so that we have that information as we get further involved in this process.
When we forward to them the link to the petition, we will mention the need for expedited approval. I did mention that to them when I spoke with the chairs.
I will second that motion, and with the proviso that all of you who have been very engaged, and we really appreciate that, can still continue to write your own letters and be involved, so you do not need to rely solely on us for this process. And I know all of you have been very involved, and we do appreciate all of your opinions, but you need to be engaged in this, too, so.
I think that's a great point. In filing for party status, the town will also be requesting a public hearing, which gives not only a butters, but any member of the community the opportunity to weigh in on this. So if you care about this issue, you must come to that meeting and weigh in. It is super important that they hear from you. If you are in a butter and you yourself register as a party status, there may be different rules that apply. I think as party status, we cannot participate in the hearing, but we will have other opportunities to participate, so you'll have to look into your own legal rights on that. But do make sure you're informed about your rights, and that is on the Siding Council website. We'll let you know what your rights and responsibilities are. But Cheryl is absolutely right. Very important that you write letters and attend those meetings if this is of concern to you. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, so we'll go ahead and sign that, and then we'll do the second. Oh, there's a second letter, guys.
We were so close. Thank you, guys. Remember, no campfires. Okay, let's go camping, guys.
Someone?
Next time I'm signing for you, the signature goes above the line. It's all right. It's good enough.
It looked like that's where it made sense. There was no line.
All right, well, while everyone's signing, and I've already blown it because I forgot to sign the other two, but Tom knows where to find me. All right, the second motion I'm going to need is a motion to authorize the first select woman to sign letters to the Commissioners of Agriculture and the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection requesting their departments voluntarily conduct a comprehensive level of review of the petition once filed.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, guys. We will then go on to appointments and resignations. Sign those first. And I'm going to need to see those letters again, because I did not sign them.
So you need me sitting next to you.
Lisa needs the signed letters.
Those little red sign here tabs.
Yeah, really.
I know.
They're very helpful.
I think one more.
You never outgrow that.
You know, when you do a lot of online signatures, they'll have those. Do people so used to them?
Yes, I think so. All right. May I have a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Lauren P. Shoemaker, Republican, as a regular member of the Water Pollution Control Authority, with our thanks effective June 9, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. You have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of June 12. They will stand as final. Unless people have changes, please let me know.
Yeah, we just need to make one amendment. I believe we have to put this gentleman's name.
Okay. So may I have a motion to amend the minutes? Where, what line?
So he's 1, 2, 3, 4, fourth down, where it says, "A Resident." Those were his comments.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not saying.
On the second page. Sorry.
Yeah, under public audience.
The fourth comment, set of comments down.
So may I have a motion to change "A Resident" to, and this was a mister?
Yes.
Mr. Zengqi Zhang.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. I'll give that back to you.
He was here again tonight.
So we will go ahead and add that. So may I have a motion, oh, we did the motion approval. Did we vote on it?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
All right. So with that, we will move on to selectmen liaison and subcommittee reports. Before we even begin, Cheryl, I did have a request from a resident. Wanted to know where we were with the 350 celebration with you and Elaine. Any progress?
Elaine and I have met regarding that. We have formulated a, sort of an outline of committee members that we feel would be useful, you know, in getting this process started, and we have had... And we have had several residents volunteer. So, if somebody is interested in volunteering, they should contact either myself or Elaine.
Okay, I'll send them to you.
And we will, you know, see what slot. You know, it's still a, it's more preliminary categories of people. So.
All right.
Yes.
Blank and I are demonstrating leadership by getting a jump on the beard contest.
The beard contest. Elaine and I have some serious reservations about the beard contest.
Can you fill for those members of the public who may not know what the beard contest is? Can you fill us in?
It's really not fair. Sure.
I think I was, what, eight years old when we celebrated the 300-year celebration? And they had a long beard contest. So, I think we all remember our fathers growing these hideously long beards that would actually be very in today, but were not at that time. So, there were all sorts of people walking around town.
There are some pictures. It's not pretty.
It was fun.
We are totally doing the beard contest.
I've been waiting my whole life. No, it was if you did not have facial hair and were male, you had to pay a fine.
Well, we might not go that far this time, but.
There are a couple of contests we may change.
Well, when you come to my camp, no, I'm kidding.
When's the party?
Chris, you want to give us an update on town manager recruitment process?
Yeah. So, we have a survey here to review and get your feedback on. So, as you're aware, the advertisements have gone out recruiting individuals to apply. And the next thing that, as a subcommittee, Tom, Melissa, Sean, Cheryl, and I looked at was the survey portion of what will be a fairly extensive outreach process overall. So, that's going to include surveys that can be sent to specific constituencies, that can be put up on our website. There are going to be forums, and there are going to be outreach-focused groups as well. So, and I think we've definitely got assurances that our consultant is very focused on effectively doing outreach to the community. So, what you have in front of us is the proposed survey that would be utilized. And so, our intent here was to get this to you beforehand and allow you to provide us with comments and feedback. And then we'll do a final edit of this, and this will be what's utilized.
All right. Any questions for Chris? Thank you and the subcommittee for your efforts on that. I thought the questions were very good, and it will be nice to see what residents have view as important.
Thank you. All right.
There's no action you need on this, is there?
We do not.
This is going to go, right?
This will go forward, right?
So, you know, we don't need to vote on that? It's just, this is going to go?
Well, we can take a vote.
I don't feel the need to, as long as everybody understands this is going live.
Yeah, we're going to put this on the website, right?
Yep.
Yes. I don't, I mean, if somebody wants a vote, I'm happy to entertain.
No, I just, again, I wanted to make, sorry, Chris, I just want to make sure.
That's fine. Yep.
Okay.
If Lisa yells at us next meeting, why'd you go survey the town?
It could happen.
Speak now for a world peace.
I have one quick update.
I haven't yelled at him in a while, so.
Yeah, of course.
The Community for Care has filmed a program for SCTV rather than having a program in June, but we had Tom Steen and Sue Harmack-Lumpe film an informational program for SCTV, which I would encourage parents to watch while your kids are home for the summer. We touched on some recent social media, I'm going to call them crazes, but because it's crazy, but, and a lot of suicide prevention information related to those social media sites. So, it's only half an hour. It's great information. We have some direction to websites and other information available during the interview. So, I would encourage you, just take a little time, look at it. If you have kids in middle school, high school, it's definitely something you're going to want to see.
Cheryl, if you put together a town news and announcement, we'd be happy to get that out for you. And Cheryl, there's another thing I think you should update us on. What's that? Graduation.
Thank you.
Graduating.
My son, Terry, graduated a week ago Friday. We're all very proud. It was soggy, but I think the administrators made a tough call. But we appreciate the fact that everybody got to go because once you move it inside, you have to restrict attendance. And all the grandparents, aunts, uncles, and cousins all got to go and see everybody graduate. And it was a great community celebration of our excellent schools. They were great speakers. I know Sean had a personal interest in one of the speakers. In fact, he was quoted in the Hartford Current on an article relating to graduation, and we're all thrilled. I'm very happy to get my youngest going off to college in August. It's great.
Well, congratulations to all the 2017 graduates at Simsbury High School, including your son.
I could just tag on, so Tavion Matthews, he actually spoke to us at one of our meetings. So, he was one of the speakers. And while he is not officially a member of the Eskom family, my wife seems to be going through a similar sadness that he's going off to college. So, he's a good kid, and we're very proud of him. He's going to Cornell next year. So, he's done a hell of a job. So, he's, it's really, really cool to see that. So, thank you.
All right. Well, congratulations to everyone. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Wow, how is it only 7:30? That's kind of crazy.
I know. That seems like it should be.
I was waiting for you to say it during the meeting. Something happened.